There we go. I went back on mute and then it wouldn't let me unmute. Oh, I just saw everybody. So am I running the presentation? I'm so confused now. Okay, I can't hear any of you.
Charmaine.
Yeah?
So now I'm gonna turn mine on.
Charmaine, can you hear us?
Yes.
Perfect. Wow. Thank you, Claudia.
All right. You're on. Whoever's starting. Oh, Charmaine disappeared again.
Hold on, hold on, timeout. I just gotta do one quick thing. Okay.
Is everybody able to see it?
Well, thank you so much for working with us. And I figured you all, as much as I love seeing you in person, you probably didn't want to have me spread my viral pink eye germs. So I appreciate, I appreciate you making this work, this workaround. So, all right, we're ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, so thanks again. If you don't know me, or folks in the audience don't know me, my name's Charmaine Swan. I'm one of the coaches for the Schwamigan Bay Dirt Serpents. We're a composite team for NICA, and we're just really excited here. We've got student athletes that are gonna help give a presentation about our team and our year. So we'll pass it over to Emmy Rausch first.
I'm Emmy Rausch, first year racing for the Dirt Serpent. Founded 2009, NICA is developing industry interested, lasting mountain biking programs across the United States. I feel like more than just mentioning, it's empowering me to be part of a tribe of youth. NICA values are fun, inclusivity, equity, respect, and community. These values started practices from day after day.
Again, I'm Axel Swan. This is my second year racing for the team. This year I raced as a freshman in the D2 category. The Wisconsin League is one of the first and largest of the NICA leagues in the country. In the 2023 season, there were 92 teams across the state with almost 2,000 student athletes, which kind of blew my mind. And there were seven race weekends. All coaches and volunteers, in addition to racing, or all coaches are volunteers. And in addition to racing, NICA offers adventure programs, team trail tours, where we work on local trails that we're wearing. A girls riding together, which is sometimes referred to as GRIT, Junior Ambassador Program, that's new this year. And that was featuring one of our middle school girls from Ashland, Harcourt, who's right there.
Hi, I'm Harcourt. I'm currently a junior at the Wisconsin. I'm a basketball host.
So we practice as the Schwamigan Bay Dirt Serpents with two racers from several school districts, private schools, and also a public school. Students can do it as well.
My name is Andrew Woodstreet. I'm this year, my first year racing on the team. I'm a sixth grader. Practices started July, and our team attended five races across the state. We travel long distances to race weekends and camp as a team.
Oh, I was just gonna say that if you aren't familiar with what a cross-country mountain bike race is like, or you have no idea how big these events can get, we figured the best way to do that was to show you a short video of kind of some of the races and some of the skills that we work on, as well as some of the fun that we have as a team. So this is a short video. There you go, Emmy. Nice job. Nice climbing.
That's great. That's right. You couldn't tell very well, but we all had Oreos. They tried to get them into our mouth. Third year, they're getting into our mouth.
This is just us at the Fourth of July parade. Couldn't help but share, really just trying to get the awareness out there about mountain biking, but we had a really fun time. Okay, doc. Cool. Well, yeah, I just feel like, again, if you haven't been to a cross-country biking race, I hadn't before becoming a coach and having Axel participate. It kind of blew my mind what the races were like and how big they are, especially when all of the league is together at one of the races, which happened a few times in the season. Lisa, do you want to take this slide, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm Lisa White-Spenny, and the head coach of the Dirt Serpents. This past year was our second year as a high school and middle school team. We go from sixth grade up to fourth grade. And Calvin and Axel were two high school racers from Washburn. I mean, had a really great year, pretty impressive. And listed there are other kids that participated from Washburn, and also Sunshine Walberg, she's a sixth grade girl, she was on the team. But race or not, every kid is on our team. There's no tryouts for everything. There's no one sits on the bench. And that's what the coolest thing about this team is, everybody has a chance to be on the team. So we just wanted to also highlight a few other bike programs that are in the area that that, one of them being the Corey Bike Hubs, that went on for about 10 years, started by Eunice, who runs that through the UW extension. I know Steph's kids have been in that in the past. In 2018, we added summer school class in progression skills and exploring local trails with Matt Goodness in schools. And right before COVID, myself and my husband joined as the coaches, and we had 10 club riders for grades three and eight. We have weekly rides from May to July, and the South Shore Summer School and Superior Adventure, also part of our biking program. Also, we started just last year, 2022, or yeah, 2022 Schwamigan Area Little Bellas program. This is just strictly girls program. It's a national program that promotes getting more girls on bikes. It's not a competitive way to get the girls outside, and it goes for ages, maybe seven to 13. It's got that 25 riders, and we have mentors, adult mentors that help teach base trail riding skills, and while also keeping it fun and using games. And it was our first little ballet group in Wisconsin, and it was great for all those girls. Both these things would be a great feeder program for our bike team. Charmaine, you gonna take this one?
Yeah, so whether you may or may not be aware of this, I'm sure Ms. Ivy, you're aware, but the Washburn Elementary, I was talking to Matt Goodness, and he said it was the first school in the state to receive funding and bikes for the All Kids Bike Program. So that began in 2020, and he's able to have 4K kindergarten and first graders actually going from gliding or striding, so where they sit on the bike and they kind of push their feet back and forth, to then gliding, feet off the ground, and then pedal biking, because they can attach pedals to these bikes within a few classes. So that's pretty neat, and I think we should be really proud that we were the first school in the state to get that funding and to get these bikes, especially at such a young age for kiddos, to have that as a part of the PE curriculum at our school is really, really neat. And then the other thing we just wanted to make the board aware of is that there are two current grants that would be available to the school. Outride program is a little bit more geared at middle school age students, and actually, there's data that suggests that mountain biking at that, in those middle school age years promotes well-being and mental health. And so we see this as a real upstream protective factor. So there's Riding for Focus, which actually gives the school district money to purchase bikes and helmets for that sixth through eighth grade, in addition to providing also the curriculum. And then there's other ways that, say, the North Coast Cycling Association could apply for grants to then help implement and put on programs that would focus on youth development for mountain biking. So just some cool opportunities out there. I believe Ashland received one of these Outride grants somewhat recently and was able to purchase bikes for their middle school students. I think that's all we've got, unless there's any questions. Thank you so much for letting me zoom in and way to go, team. Should we power clap them, Lisa? Should we introduce them to a power clap?
Totally ready for it.
Power clap, ready? Three, two, one.
I don't.
Thank you very much for coming in. It was very interesting. I didn't realize that this was even existed. So it's very cool.
Yeah, so we're strictly a club program. Other teams run things to their goals as well, but just wanting to include like the entire Schwamigan area and get off against everything. Going, started out.
Is there anything being done to look at that grant for the middle school? For the bikes?
We haven't looked at it at this point in time, but it's definitely something that we can look into.
You know, anything to get them active and outside is enough their devices.
I agree.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to public comments. If you would like to speak for public comments, each person has three minutes of their time alone and cannot be passed on to anyone else. If you have concerns or comments about individuals, those are not appropriate during public comment times. So please don't say anything that would identify circumstances or a person or a group of people directly by what you say. Be respectful. People on Zoom are welcome to join public comments. Just put your name in the chat. If there's anyone here who would like to address the board, please come forward. And come to the mic. Anybody on the chat? All right. Ready? Okay. We'll move on to the approval of financial reports and bill.
Nothing necessary to report for this month, and if you have questions, just let me know. But otherwise, I would move to approve the financial report that those people agree.
Any questions? Favor?
I opposed.
Motion carried. Long-range planning committee.
We had a long-range planning committee meeting on Monday. We, let's see, we talked about the perceptions update, which that kind of second round of the survey went out to get to those folks that
Got it. Got mine.
That got missed. I think they have all come back, right? Oh, those on the way. So it looked like they all got out.
Good. Nice. Thanks for doing that.
I think that was very appreciated. And, you know, so it'll close, we'll go through the results and present on that in January.
Okay.
We talked about the 2022 survey. We have a new season coming.
They're working.
They're working on a new season.
Season, Chris Trigo's contract, coming with us. And go get it college. So I'll reach out to and see if personally to help us have that.
But, you know, the biggest thing is that we're gonna hold off on that community survey because we are concerned about sort of reaching the T in the community. So we're gonna hold off until January for that. So more to come on that. We did our administrative reports, which we guys always really a better job at.
Yeah, I think there was three main areas. And that's something that's in the administrative reports. We covered it now, we covered it down, talked about this. You know, what the headline may come out to do, which it was, compared to where the data is and that, and how that, you know, report card grade, I don't know if you'll call it that, but the report card.
Both about score.
Score. It's very different than what we look at with achievement and, you know, spent a little bit of time, a lot of time talking about that, answering some questions. And, you know, in our administrative reports, we talked a little bit, so we spent a lot of time with community feedback on some topics.
We talked about that. We talked about the website. We talked about that quite a bit, because kind of the new version of our website has kind of rolled out, so we'll get a little feedback on that. What we heard was kind of negative. So that may need some more work. We talked about, specifically, we had some people talk about issues with sports, like gym scheduling, and many conflicts, and kind of last-minute changes that seems to be happening over and over and over again, and kind of the effect that that has on families, kids, you know, all sorts of stuff. So on what, how that could be rectified.
Like use of the facility, use as a gym?
You know, like, some people do the job of booking things on the calendar. Sometimes that gets missed, or it was changed the last minute because of referees or schools, you know, teams not wanting to have. So there's a lot of shuffling that happens, and along the way, there's this communications, parents still get notified, students get notified, they get, you know, so so one of the things that we talked about that could really help, that would be some sort of a shared calendar between the people who need to schedule, so that they can see when there's conflict. We talked about thinking that is an option for some sort of technology or a human being, whatever, to just make eye on this calendar, a double check. Like, hey, this week, look, there's that obvious, like, you're between, there's two different teams going to the gym, they're talking. And then the other piece was communication to the families and students. And we all talked about using some technology, and I think it got settled on an app called Team Reach, which a lot of people have been using already. So it was agreed upon that all the winter sports.
Winter coaches are all signed up.
Yeah, are all ready to use it, kind of trial it, and then carry it. See, does this work well? Can we keep going? Should we do something different? So I think it was good to have that, that discussion. With them then.
Well, just can I do a follow-up?
Absolutely.
So after that, we went back, and you know, I looked at the system, the calendar. I looked at how things are put on the calendar, who puts them on the calendar, all the way down to, I think, what some of the grassroots complaints were. And we have a master calendar, but everything gets filtered into it. One of the things to make sure it's the most accurate, I think I've ordered, you know, Shandra and Dwayne are gonna connect every Monday. We'll look at the week to make sure everything matches. As you can appreciate, things change in high school athletics, middle school athletics, there's a rough shortage. So anytime they change, conflicts arise. Gym space is at a premium in our district. So I think Shandra and Dwayne have that part worked out. The communication, I found that most of the varsity high school coaches already had a communication system set up with their players and family who's not checking these things. So they're just having them all go through Team Reach, they were all fine, they're gonna assess it in February, March, see if that's something they want to go with. She also extended it out to all the middle school and our ever-expanding elementary programs. So making sure all those coaches or advisors also use that type of technology. You need to make sure that the master calendar for the district that has all the co-curriculars, activities, school board meetings, matches with what schools have, because there are times where high school announced a game, that game was changed on the master calendar, but the person may have referenced either the original hard calendar that was given out at the beginning of the year. Or they looked at the high school calendar, and it had been switched multiple times. So making sure that all the calendars coordinate that Monday meeting will help Shandra. We'll look at, okay, that we're all set, and that'll be helpful. We can always work on improving communication through the system, but system-wise, it looks like some of the stuff is in place. We set the double and triple check for work. We don't have conflicts. The biggest thing, though, that we still need to be aware of, I think we talked about this in the past, is there is a hierarchy for school use. First thing that comes is our curriculum. Our curriculum needs drive building. So when the band music program put their concert on three months ago, that takes precedence over anything else that we have in the history. The next level is our varsity sports. So varsity sports then is the next level, or varsity co-curriculars are things that are, you know, the high school level stuff. Middle school then, elementary then, and then after all of that, any club, organization, or community group would then be able to schedule on the form, which we're looking at the forms as well. On the policies that if a school activity arises, anything underneath that unfortunately needs to be rescheduled. Basketball on Wednesday night, Sunday night sometimes gets bumped. In this case, a game or concert looked precedent tier, the varsity practice at the elementary school, elementary school, middle school, elementary got bumped, and then there was a lack of communication at that grassroots level of the elementary middle that they don't have a spot tonight, the practice should have been canceled. So we worked all the way through to make sure that it's an issue when we have two to three people coordinating all of these things. Matt's out. Great. He's celebrating the life of his child, and he's our webmaster, that it kind of complicates some things. And we had a coach who was responsible, unfortunately had a family emergency, was medically not able to be available for that email. So there were some things that broke out structurally. Yeah, we'll always look at how to fix the structure. We'll always look at how to communicate, who communicates, how can we use technology? The website will be continually addressed if I can. The website, we want to make sure so we don't spend money on redesign and have the same product. We have to make sure people know how to use it with what we currently have, before we invest and spend the money on that. So we have some redesign. Matt did a nice job of, you know, putting some things in that are in different locations. Everything to me that I look for is about two, maybe three clicks away. But I knew where to look. So we're also talking about maybe putting a tutorial, so a lot of things that we're looking at fixing, but a lot of really good discussion, a lot of concerns. And again, I say this every year I've been here, we only get better when we're in the top one, something rightly, and this is another area that we've invested in. If an elementary basketball club team gets bumped, that is also part of the process of high school, middle school, other curricular area that needs that space. We have two building, two big gyms, and emerging activities, which is great, but it is a space issue. The conflict with the dinner for the member of the community was brought on because the referees that were they wanted to switch. The referee said, we're not switching because we have to get to an engagement that is a tradition for them to go to. So they refused to move their time. So the game needed to stay where it was. So it did create a conflict. One of the members of the long range planning said it was a conflict, someone dinner expecting them to watch the game online. That game was not, at that time, it was at 7:30 time because the referee had switched.
Well, that and the amazing relaxation that you are.
This is due. I had getting some really nice feedback that the oriental chicken was a hit. We all canceled a potential problem yesterday. And I had a long, it's called a breakfast cookie.
Yeah.
It's a cookie. So we're going away from cookies for breakfast. I'm also learning that when I order like pizza and stuff that we can, there are other options. So we went with the whole grain, real cheese pizza.
And it looks exactly like the fake pizza.
School or any school, you have pizza.
It still fits in the direction.
It's a healthy option. So we're having some of it, and we're getting, you know, apples and salad bars back. So I'm working with Ling Ling and Cheryl, and they're gonna start taking over Sullivan hopefully, Danny Werman, but we want to give them an opportunity to learn.
Sometimes these changes have to come from the top.
And I do bread, the buns, and toast, and then I do all of them. So we have, we order about three times a week. So I like meet with the kitchen staff. They'll bring down a legal pad. We've worked out that I need not just pork, I need to know exactly, there's like eight options of pork. So we're working.
Milk is gotta be a lot easier. You picked the right one, Janet.
Everyone helps out. That's the main thing.
Nice. Thanks for your extra work on that. Anything else? It's long-range planning or? Okay. Well, it was a lot.
Well, it was a lot.
Great. Absolutely.
Especially this particular year, when there's so much going on.
Excellent. Personnel.
Okay, so we met on Tuesday, and Dr. Wyder presented the employee handbook for support staff revisions. There was an endendum regarding pay and increases for the 23-24 school year. Ivy gave a staff update about the elementary school, and there's been three internal changes. All are going well, and there was one staff member who unfortunately is out on medical leave. Dr. Wyder reported that Angie is going to be doing the summer school program instead of Sandra and Shandra, and that Ivy is in professional development. Ivy's taking over professional development.
All the handbooks, I've made your change, the wing change. Sort of as a committee, and I'm all supporting the support side of it. So I'm community of the rest of the year. Community of the rest of the years with many changes. Uh, they looked at those changes, they gave us feedback, so in the shared drive, anything that's. In color on the one draft, you'll see all of their questions. The answer to the comments, the areas that were addressed, maybe even a clean version that. Um, we all met again, went through everything, they agreed to do and liked something with changes. Big thing was we had the trainings. Uh, Good Friday came home. The day after Thanksgiving, as one was through the year, um, all the staff of that application day. And then the big thing was that um, said we added. Uh, kind of a table, like we added a table in the back to recognize an honor of seventy in the district, so. Three years, three years of five percent in addition to CPI. We re-identified and looked at all of the starting wages, we um, labeled all of what everyone that we had. And what they would come in and we also added a responsibility. So let's say you are hired for something, the district needs something, instead of just adding it on to someone, there's no recognition of, it's kind of like, so hey, thank you. Um, every um, additional duty that's approved by the. Principal superintendent and board can be an additional dollar. So instead of just dumping things on people. Principals are finalizing what those responsibility factors may look like in addition to their current job descriptions.
Give her that extra dollar. Good. That's it for personnel?
That's it.
All right, administrative reports.
Uh, we covered most of mine, uh, I don't know if anyone else talked, we did a very nice turnout for uh, DPI standards, I think we won the attendance. Uh, for that night, so they were impressed with our districts, so that was, I think, something in addition to what we had going on, but the rest of us, that was covered.
Yeah, sure, uh, mostly for mine, most of my stuff was in the board report. Um, just talking about, a little bit about the food service. We hired two new people in the food service, Cheryl and Lori are their names. We do have the position still posted, because we know we're gonna have two retirements up at the elementary school, and so we're trying to look. To fill so that there could be training, and then we have a smooth transition at the end of the year into the summer's. Summer school stuff, so we're working on still finding a fourth person, it puts us a little over budget on. What we're doing for this year, but that will give us a smooth transition into the next year in order to be able to. You know, keep going so that Dr. Wyder and Janet don't have to keep ordering stuff. So we still have that, and otherwise most, as you can see in there, we did this month. Last month in November, I forgot that it's not November anymore. Um, we had our lockdown drills in both buildings. Um, here in the high school, it went very quickly, we had two officers on. Deck with us, Officer Johnson was here and Officer Clapero was here as well, went through the entire building. Um, as last year. They said the same thing as they said this year, they're always just amazed that when they come in in these lockdowns and they're like, are you sure there's kids here? So our kids know this is what we do and this is how we behave in these situations. Um, they're very good at hiding, so they can't be seen because they shine flashlights, they go into rooms and. They're still always like, wow, there's a few tweaks that we have to come across, you know, like in terms of like. Being able to hear in the band room when this, when the things go off or in the shop. Making sure everybody knows how to lock their doors, those kind of things, we worked on those. Um, otherwise that went really well, and I just wanna touch on our report cards, I'm. We have improvements to make, but I'm really pleased because in both middle school, high school, our, our achievement and scores have both gone up. Our high school meets, meets expectations, we're working towards getting to that exceeds, but. Um, I'm, I'm happy with the growth that we've seen over the course of the last year. Um, we still have work to do and that's gonna help guide what we do as a team and as a district. Um, but our scores have gone up some, and that's, I'm very happy with that, so. I think I'll leave it there.
Okay, I'll have to enter the elementary as well. Um, something I mentioned to staff is it might feel like the same drill for them each year, but from our perspective. Outside looking in, working with Washington Police Department, we can see improvements every time we practice it. Um, and it just elicits conversations and staff meetings too, on um, how to ensure the top level of safety for our students every day. Um, Angie mentioned the school report cards a little bit, last year we did a school board, um, or a school report card spotlight. Um, and so we went through just the basics of understanding um, how it's comprised. What, what makes up those scores, um, how it's different from district to district, but it's also different from school to school. So um, those four priority areas of achievement, growth, target group outcomes, and on track to graduation are ranked in a different percentile. Um, at the district level and then at each building level too. It is so, it's sometimes hard to predict what that overall score is going to be. Uh, but what we can predict and what is most important to us is the proficiency of our students. And so we know that um, on the state assessment, students are either below basic, basic proficient or advanced. And what our goal is that every year we're gonna increase the number of students who are proficient and advanced. And we did that at all three buildings and at the district level, uh, and by a significant amount. Um, a few percentiles is a, a lot of growth, and we made five point three percent growth in math and eight point five percent growth in. English language arts, which is really exciting. Just like Angie mentioned, um, there's still a lot of work to do though, so um, we're gonna continue, we're hoping to continue that same growth. Um, most districts are receiving these report cards and just starting this conversation at this board meeting. With their community, with their staff, with their board, uh, we never stopped from last year. Uh, we know we have school improvement committee that set goals, we worked on those goals throughout the entire school year. In March, we had data to predict what achievement levels were, it's very close to what we predicted. In the summer, we received those, um, a lot of data and we started to calculate that. And already we're working on improvement efforts for this year over the summer. So we'll continue that work, just a reminder, our five focus areas for school improvement, um, are gonna be working on the standards. Uh, working on improving curriculum resources. Uh, increasing the depth of knowledge for each standard and each content area. Uh, continuously improving instructional minutes and practices. And then creating um, a really strong thorough intervention system in that students have individual support both for their. Challenges that they're facing and for their strengths, and that was a big conversation for us in November at the school improvement committee was. Um, really extending opportunities for students who are proficient in advance. Alongside continuing to provide a really strong support for students who may be below proficiency. Um, moving on from the school report card, just as Dr. Wyder mentioned, you sure can?
I know I emphasized achievement, that's all everyone needs to achieve. It grows also very important, it's like work, everything that we do on our. Questioning communities, how we use data, all of our conversations, how we engage parents. Uh, achieve three thousand, everything is set and moving, I know we wanted to be as proficient as. But I know, I know we presented this before, the growth from. Basic. To the next level, and from, you know, the next level to proficient. Or just for some students, the tremendous amount of growth even within base was significant.
Absolutely.
Um, I know everybody there, but in, you know, the staff is doing amazing work. To look at and reach all our learners. We want to also not forget the top line, that guy, you know, talked about that on each plan, but. There's tremendous growth within those, being very, very. Still being in that basic, but tremendous growth in basic, almost on that cusp of getting to that next level, so. That's where that growth score can improve, achievement improves, that growth score is being improved, but. I didn't wanna not mention that, um, some of those learners who've come to us from other districts. Who might not have certain skill sets. Are recovering that, that information, that, and we are. That two years of different learning. Um, we're seeing some growth.
Also, we don't include science and social studies scores in the school report card, we're not ranked on those. I think Angie included proficiency levels of the middle school for social studies, high school's even better um, achievement. And the number of students who are proficient advanced in social studies across the board and science as well is um, is excellent, and actually I can include that with my next report. Because it's something to celebrate, even though it's not shown on the school report card, it doesn't impact our overall score, and of course, all the other areas. Um, that we know our students thrive in are not reflected in our report card too. Uh, when it comes to DPI event.
Work to do.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes.
I know there's some Facebook things out there, I'm trying to believe them. But even in a year where we were a member of the school, we had work. So we're not at our goal.
Right.
Uh, when the Department of Public Instruction came um, for the event, Dr. Wyder mentioned we had a, a good turnout, they were very pleased with that, um, we were. Served appetizers from Pat Braddish for the community, which was great. Thank you, it was, it was really great. Uh, and just really, it was really an open-ended listening session, and so um, we had state representatives just listening, receiving feedback on the strengths, challenges. And input from our community members, they also had the opportunity to provide a tour for them, so. We, we really focused on the green and healthy aspects of our school. Uh, I figured that they get to do a lot of tours, I see a lot of schools, schools are often similar from, you know, tour to tour. And so we um, really did an outdoor tour, we went to the playground, uh, the outdoor classroom, the school garden, up to the last city. Took them all up to the school forest, and at one point they stopped in the school first and they said. Do your kids know how lucky they are to go here? And I said, I don't know, I mean, I think even we forget sometimes because. They asked like, how often do you use this building, and it was really exciting to be able to tell them all the time, we have students coming all the time up here. Um, circle down to the high school, to the high tunnel and the aquaponics lab, and then they actually asked for more, so that was almost an hour and a half, and they said. Can we see the buildings we wanna see in your classrooms? Um, they were really excited about all the work we've done with um, setting up. Welcoming environments for students, um, the instructional practices that we're using. A lot of the school improvement efforts, we were able to communicate and share with them, they were very excited to hear what we were doing. Um, and it was really nice that um, sort of reaffirming the work that we're doing and, and knowing that that's happening all over the state. Um, or they're helping districts do that all over the state, right? And then they also are very excited to hear about our five day a week four K program, the emphasis we have in early childhood. And they were really impressed with that early learning center, had lots of questions and promised to come back because they would like to help. Um, more districts set up that same type of learning environment across the state, so they were very, very excited to see that. Absolutely, they were.
Where we are located. They, DPI, beautiful thing about having assistance with that, they can make that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So when we're talking to them about the program and our parenting class and everything, they were doing the best, it was science. Leading that right into, that would be a great certificate for a high school student to get, if DPI would, and. They were, I also had a chance to late, but I joined them over here, and all I kept hearing is wow. We're out of the bioswelling, we're just. So little, I mean, yeah, any school, little school, and all the opportunities we have for kids. They were.
They're excited, they were, yep.
He said at the beginning of his presentation, the assistant superintendent, so I think I said wow more than I've ever have in my whole life today.
They still use our green and healthy video. Being seen because they weren't elementary.
Uh, just a couple other updates, we did have a curriculum council meeting, um, we've sort of um, brought technology committee into that meeting too. And so um, we're having updates on AI and then the slight conference that Cody and Matt were at. And um, just moving forward with those, integrating that right into our curriculum work, and same thing with the professional development committee. In the updates or reports that you receive from us, you're hearing. School improvement committee, curriculum council, and professional development committee are all working on very similar goals. Or the school improvement goals are all happening through curriculum council, professional development committee. It makes sense to combine those forces, work together, make the most of those meetings, and so we'll continue that process. Um, two big goals for curriculum council, which are school improvement goals. Are working on updating the standards um, across the board, and then also. Uh, really using data in professional learning community meetings, I actually met with somebody from CISA twelve today. Who's supporting us with um, the next level, we see a lot with proficiency, we're going deeper into what strands within math. Within science, social studies and ELA. Our strengths, where areas for growth, and so our PLC teams are gonna really analyze that and then impact their instruction.
Need to update some of the committee, I don't call it job description, but. They're now need to be integrated in the. Break in council, and we'll give them a great pleasure in redoing.
Your turn.
No longer. It's, it's, it's a massive step.
Yeah.
Um, getting staff to get to a seven thirty check committee, getting membership, it's the same people, we're following those people. Streamline of that. Makes sense.
And then my last update is a new committee, um, just at the building level, but parent advisory committee, and so. Uh, we had met one time in the last board meeting and then we met twice more since then. And um, what we decided to do was break into subcommittees, smaller groups. Um, selected the best day and time to meet for the families who were involved in that. And then we honed in on two specific topics that was voted on by the group, so one was discipline and accountability, what does that look like at the elementary level? The other one was nutrition and food service. Um, we had a really rich conversations and discussions with both of those topics, and then came up with three action items for each one. Um, the, for the discipline and accountability piece, uh, a big portion of that meeting was presenting the system we have in place. Uh, we have a very well-designed, well-developed system for responding to challenging behavior for students. We know that all students have strengths and challenges. And um, we base this system on. Uh, the best practices in education, research on what's most effective, and our own data in our own school to ensure we're always improving and seeing growth from our students. And I think the members felt really um, excited to hear about that, but also didn't know about that system, all the. The intricacies of it, and one of the action items was just how do we proactively communicate that system, so everybody understands. What, what we're doing and how we're supporting all students. Um, a second goal for us related to that one is um, sort of starts off with philosophy and moves into practice, and so if you think about. Um, structure, high structure or low structure, um, that's something that we often think about in schools. Um, kindergarten, high structure, sixth grade, a little bit lower as our developing skills. Um, and even throughout the day, you're gonna have different times of high and low structure, and if you move this way, think about support. Um, would be like teacher involvement in helping meet those goals, so you could technically have high structure and low support, really rigid expectations. If you don't meet those expectations, no chance to learn it, you're, you're penalized, you move forward. Where high structure, high support is the goal, and that's where you have both high expectations, really clear expectations. But also support them with it, you model it, you positive reinforcement, right? And so, you know, that's what we know is the um, ideal learning environment, research shows us that's ideal. And so just communicating that with families and kind of coming to that consensus, we're all in agreement, that's the best learning environment for our students. And then identifying specific times where we wanna increase structure or support to ensure we always have optimal learning for all students. And then the third goal that came out of it, um, is we felt like there was strong support in place for students facing challenges, whether it's academic or behavior. We wanna ensure that we have those same strong supports for students who need additional challenges. And it kind of um, spurred a conversation on uh, gifted and talented programs and supporting students who are advanced, which ties right back into our school improvement efforts. Uh, and then for food and nutrition, um, really great conversation, lots of different ideas and different perspectives. And we were able to hone in on three action items, so one is continuing expanding the salad bar, that's a really meaningful way for students to. Um, have a lot of healthy choices and make smart choices and tie in the food from the garden. The second one was continuing expanding the um, harvest of the month, and so sending recipes to families, having that part of the menu. I'm serving that food each month, and then the third one was this overall goal, big picture goal of um, reducing sugar content. And then increasing uh, local foods and homemade foods. Um, whenever possible, and understand there's limitations and challenges with that, but big picture goal, that's where we want to move. And we're al- already able to make some of those changes, that pizza example was a perfect example.
Or getting rid of the cookies.
And getting rid of those breakfast cookies, yeah, exactly, so. Sorry for the long, long update, but it was really productive, parent advisory committee meetings, and we'll need to get in January to review those, and we have a few new items that we'll continue to add to it.
Nice, thank you, any questions? For you, dear administration. All right. Um, let's move on to the consent agenda. The motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Is there any questions? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Discussion items, legislative.
Tomorrow. Literacy, September first start date, through the end of this time, we have random ballot, revenue, see the revenue of the ceiling. School psychologists, loan programs, tech in France, UW guaranteed admissions, high school, class training, DPI, mental health training. All on this, I don't want IDA title to affect.
CISA twelve.
Um, at November's meeting, CISA twelve completed their sportsmanship summit at Superior High School. Seventeen districts participated in the event. Um, every district brought students and adult supervisors. Uh, students learned about how the role of an official connects to the sportsmanship. Practice different sportsmanship scenarios, using local context and experience. Regarding students' section behavior, parent and community involvement. And the, from our students that went, was there good feedback from that?
I didn't, I didn't talk to them.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they, they always enjoy. Mm-hmm, yeah, they, they always enjoy going because A, they get to meet other kids and learn what they're doing in those buildings. Um, but they also, I think sometimes, some of the things that get talked about are more eye-opening and they're like, oh, I didn't think about. Because some of the things they do, they think it's just in good fun, but then they hear from other schools about like. How maybe that's not the best cheer that we could do for whatever reason, so they really like going, it's really fun for them, they learn a lot. Um, and I think it really does help, we're seeing some pretty good growth in our school spirit and what we're seeing at the games is a lot less, um. A lot. Tamer, and, and it's more appropriate, that's, I guess that's what I'm looking at, it's been a lot more appropriate over this last year than it has been. Um, from when I first got here even, so they learn a lot and they really have fun when they go.
There was a lot.
There, there's a lot of kids that go, I think from here. I don't remember, we had two chaperones go, so it was a good number, I don't remember what that number was, but it was a good number of kids that went.
Not two.
Not two.
No, no.
Definitely not.
Um, the other thing, CISA twelve runs a cybersecurity program, Jamie Glass is participating in. State and national groups around this topic and serves on the statewide incident response team. Jamie's currently meeting with districts to talk to them about cybersecurity basics and initial setup, initial steps that districts can make. To take, to protect their data. Has he spoken here yet?
Yep, we had her.
I think we've contracted with CISA.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah.
It was just.
It's a really good plan, but I think I agree, um, we're not gonna put that in a public document because.
Right.
Uh, we have a really good plan, we have a response, we'll share that with staff, we'll then service that on how to, if they are. Informed or fish or something happens, where they do similar to what we do about it. This is the second. Uh, and that means very knowledgeable, it is a boilerplate type plan, but it's customized a little bit to.
Well, it was really interesting to learn that, I mean, you think of the cybersecurity as, you know, they're taking their money, they're making everything, but is it something as simple as. I've gotten an email that's, you know, I'm still monitoring the, it's a very female, because there's no stock coming through that we need to update. And there was one that came in and said that somebody tried to log into her account at one o'clock in the morning, but it's Sunday. And I was like, does that constitute, you know, one of these breaches, and they're like, yeah. Cause I had referred it to Cody and he changed passwords and, you know, everything like that, so. It's, that plan would even be used for something that's complicated and something like that.
Is that something that the board is gonna be trained on also?
I think we, I mean, I'll.
I mean, we've all got school email addresses and stuff, so.
Maybe we'll have to have a special. And you can go through that.
Sure.
You're just talking about training, and then you have to watch for, you know, you don't want a separate thing.
Well, you said you were gonna be doing something with staff.
Yeah.
I would think that whatever they're needing, we would need. Yes, no.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, WASB Annual Convention's coming up soon, and.
This is always a popular packet. I hand out, if anyone is going, also can be considered, and I think. So A is, who would like to go because dreams are now, I think, in a print or in a print box. So you need to let us know, and if you are attending and still can register, or if you're not subscribed, I think. And then we have to, you know, update there, so, and then if you are attending and you wish, we represent the school as well, I have the delegate assembly.
And the only person I've heard of showing any interest at this point is Tina.
Come on, you guys, nobody else, when it's, it's the middle of January, it's like January seventeenth, it's like, oh, it's.
My only caution, they have.
No.
Or I'm just saying.
We, we.
It's, we worked around it, that's not a problem.
I will represent you well.
We can count on it. Stephanie said something that you would consider.
I will look into it and check my responsibilities and the other parts of my everything.
No, we can send more than one, but the only other one.
I mean, I don't need to be.
You got a technical ribbon?
Um, you do.
I was reading that you guys would wanna.
So I'm, I didn't even open this, I assume it's the same thing. Official delegates, ma'am. Cause I just brought it because, pass that over to Stephanie, I, I can't, I, I can't.
But if you are interested in going, but I didn't know, so she can register.
If you could. And if you could, if you could decide by tomorrow, that would be great because it's the early bird yet tomorrow. Yeah. You get, you get the whole case of bread, you got nobody ate. All right. Thank you, you two.
Yes.
That's great.
No, I don't check your.
Uh, okay, the Washburn Educator Council. Was, there was a report in here, do you wanna?
There was a report.
Report someplace. I don't know if Rick wants to comment on anything, or. Is he, is he like?
Yeah, you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, all I would just mention is that Tom and I met about some possible minor modifications in the employee handbook, uh, language. Um, I showed him those and I guess for consideration, and I guess what my, uh, request would be is that. At some future point, he and I meet and look at, you know, which of those modifications would be acceptable or. What things we need to do, and then at some point have the board of, uh, and I'm not exactly sure if it's necessary. Uh, but I'm assuming the board would might have to approve the language changes, and they're all very minor, but just some. You know, it's a, it's a living document, and it's something that, you know, as things come up. We should probably address, and there's, there's a couple of things that I pointed out that are literally not accurate anymore, so. We should just make those clarifications, that's all.
We'll probably put a committee at work with Rick, we've done it several times and bring anything in for the board.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. The audit report was in here, so we're ready to go on to individual action items. Um, so if we wanna go through, starting with the auditor's report. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
The auditor's report.
There's. Is there any discussion?
Just to, you know, because there was only the half a year where we had a second set of eyes in the business office, so it still showed up in there, but. Cause that was six months, we still didn't have the coverage, so that'll come off.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move to, uh, approve Paige Beach as the new high school specialized.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move to call for vote to approve Cheryl Cook as kitchen worker.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move to approve Lori Collision as kitchen worker.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Make a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll move to, uh, vote to approve the support staffing and provisions.
I'll second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Okay, for Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five.
Oh, yeah, let's read that part.
Considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data for, of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ellen?
No.
Do you wanna do this? Yes or no? We're doing a voice vote.
Yes.
Yes. Julie?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. All right, full session, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I thought you didn't, I thought you made the motion and you said no.
I don't.